What is this, the fourteenth?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth? Okay. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mary Ann.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please? Chair Campbell? Chair Campbell? Here. Can hardly hear you. Vice Chair Aguilar?
Here. There you go. I can't hear you now.
Commissioner Klinger?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. By motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. We don't... only we've got is the minutes, but okay. We have a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Please vote. Passes, I'm assuming, passes five zero. Last light didn't light up.
It's here. I think that bulbs out. That bulbs out.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay. Okay, Oral Communications. At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Is there anyone who wants to speak at Oral Communications?
Bruce Penner at Old Town Seal Beach. I'd like to speak on two topics. One is the PCH math tutorial facility. I'd like to recommend that, that you follow formatively, granting the CUP. Secondly, I wanted to just mention something that probably doesn't come up too much in the Planning Commission. But city revenues are really tied to getting things through quickly. For example, if something drags on and on and on and on, don't get something built. We don't pick up the property tax sooner. So the city suffers, and so do the people. So if there's any way to expedite that and business licenses, that would be great. So those are the two topics. Approval of the math tutorial. Speed up the process if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at Oral Communications? Seeing the one to brush up here, I will close Oral Communications. Consent calendar. Approval of the minutes for May twentieth, twenty nineteen. May I have a motion, please? Or first of all, does anyone have any comments about the minutes? No problems? Okay. May we have a motion, please?
I move to approve.
I second.
Please vote. Passes five zero? Okay, continued items, there are none. Scheduled matters, none. New business, no. Public hearings, okay. This is the conditional use permit nineteen dash three for seven fifteen Coastline Drive. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. This evening, Item B is at seven fifteen Coastline for conditional use permit nineteen dash three. It's to allow the construction of seven hundred and fifteen square feet of a second-story addition to an existing two thousand two hundred and seventy-nine-square-foot single-family residence with a two-car garage. And it's nonconforming due to setbacks, both the rear and the front. The site is located right here at the corner of Coastline and Ebtide Place. Right back here in this corner, we have a nonconforming setback and a nonconforming setback here in the front. As you can see, the property is surrounded by residential RLD nine properties. As I said, it's here before you this evening because it is a nonconforming property due to setbacks. Any nonconforming property that is nonconforming to either setbacks or height can, is allowed to add habitable space as long as it goes through a conditional use permit, so that's why it's before you this evening. The two setbacks are a five-foot-eight setback here at the rear property line, which is required to be ten feet by code. And then the front yard setback is ten feet, which is the minimum setback for site-on garages. But when this garage was converted back in nineteen sixty-eight, I'm not sure what the, the actual requirement was. But as today, it wouldn't be allowed to be in that area, so it's also nonconforming. It meets the five-foot setback here, and the fifteen percent setback here is actually eight foot nine, not ten foot like it's indicated on the plan, so the habitable space and the garage are outside of that required setback. The front porch, which is proposed, is within that setback area, but it is allowed to encroach into that sideyard setback area. So the existing floor plan does not have too much changes as it pertains to walls in the floor plan. This currently, right now, is a bedroom. It is proposed to be a game room with some minor alterations in, in this area. The major proposal is for the second floor, which they are requesting to have a master bedroom, a new bathroom, and an office area. As you can see, the elevations, we have some very nice updated elevations. So the lot coverage for this particular property is, in this particular area, is forty-five percent per code. Currently, right now, the footprint of the house, the habitable space in the garage are at forty-five percent. As you can see in your staff report, it does say that it's up to forty-seven percent. But that is for an open patio, which is allowed to go up to fifty percent. So you can have a lattice, either patio or porch, added onto the back and add an extra five percent onto the, the lot coverage. So at this point, we're at forty-seven percent lot coverage. We have received no correspondence regarding this project. And with that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have one. I know in the staff report, you went into why the ad... the front door is on Eb... Ebtide Street, Eb Street?
Madam Chair, correct. Correct.
Why isn't the address on Eb Street? Why is... I know you went into it. Had to do with the length of the, the side and the length of the front, or the width of the front. But it's on Coastline, but the front door is on Ebtide.
That is correct. So the code itself, in order to make determinations and measurements consistent, when we take a look at front yard setbacks and front yards, we don't go by what the actual addresses are. We go by the size of the lots. So this 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 is the shortest side property line that faces a street. So that is the front yard setback. This one right here is longer, which faces a street, so that is the street-side setback. So to make it consistent and make it easy for people to develop things so that they don't come out very odd and people move doors around, and then that throws setbacks off, that is why this is in the code.
I wanted a clarification on your the first-floor game room. You had kind of done a, did a circle motion next to the closets there and said there was going to be some modifications. Can you clarify the modifications? Are they removing the closet and making it into just a general room with, not a bedroom?
Currently, at this point, they are just changing the use of that particular room. They're not taking the closets out. The closets will remain the same.
So then, what, what did you mean by modifications?
I believe we had some modifications to the laundry room, if I'm not mistaken, down here towards, in this particular area. There was a closet and other things in this particular area. They're just being changed. I'm sorry, I circled this particular area earlier.
Okay, yeah.
Move the door location.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is going from a four-bedroom to a possibly five- or six-bedroom, depending on what future owners could want to do with it. Is that it?
Well, currently, right now, we have it as a game room. Technically, someone could go into that particular room and quite possibly utilize it as a bedroom. When staff did take a look at that, we made sure that currently, right now, if you upgrade this particular property up to a five-bedroom, it still remains with a two-car garage. If it were to go to a six-bedroom, they would be required to add another car garage onto this property, which, at this point, they're, they're maxed out. They wouldn't be able to do it without losing interior footprint.
So basically, let's put it another way, they're adding a bedroom and a den, and an office upstairs.
Realistically, realistically, yes.
Master bedroom and an, and an office upstairs.
That is correct.
Okay. And that doesn't require any more parking?
No, because it's within the, the requirements. Parking is only, additional parking is only required if there are additional bedrooms. It's per bedroom, not per other rooms in the house, like an office, or a gym, or a library, or anything of that nature.
Well, they may well do get out with the Orange County assessor. I'm just saying, that's... you know, you could say, "I'm not going to use it as a bedroom." It was the master bedroom. It's got a ni... a big, nice bathroom, closet. You know, I think it's a lovely plan. Really nice. They'll be up there by themselves. The kids will be other places. That's fine. So... Any other questions of staff?
No, I move to approve.
Do you want to hear from the... is the applicant here?
Do we want to let the public?
Do you want to make any statement?
I think we have to.
I think constitutionally.
I would like to retract my motion.
You need to come up to the microphone. See, all this is being taped, so that the minutes can be
They're on TV right now.
Where's the camera? I want to make sure I have my good side. Hi, I'm Autumn. My husband would have been here tonight, but he's out of town. But thanks for taking the time to go over all of this. It seems like there's a lot of things to consider, and so we appreciate you being so thorough and taking care of our community. So, thanks a lot. Do you have any questions for me?
Actually, I do, and I probably should ask this of staff, too, because I don't see it there. So on the, the addition, what are your entrance and exit routes? Meaning, is it safe to occupy a third level there? Do you have just one stairway? Is it?
Well, there's only the two levels, so there won't be a third level. But there's a stairway that is right in front of that front door there, so you'll go up.
Okay, so if there's any issues regarding, regarding like
Yeah, that's the only, the entrance and, and exit will be from that, that area.
Okay.
Had the washer and dryer been in the area that is now going to be the stairwell?
Yes. Yeah.
So you're, are you moving it somewhere else and putting in new plumbing?
No, yeah, it's, no, it's where it's supposed to be right now. It's, it is there already. So I think what's actually moving is the, the hot water heater. So you notice that the, the door in the garage is moving. And so the hot water heater that's currently there is going to be moving out. We're going to put in a tankless, and so it'll probably be outside.
Okay.
I have a question on the office.
Sure.
It has a closet. How does, what's the, how is that not a bedroom, then?
I don't know.
Because it's open?
I don't know. We just wanted a closet in our office to store, store stuff. I mean, it's not... Yeah.
So typically, to have a, a bedroom, you would have to have it enclosed. With this wall right here being open, that it, it's realistically just an open floor plan right there.
It's a loft space, basically.
Correct.
That's a good argument for the property tax assessor if they call you.
Well, I didn't even, I had never heard of the six rooms and having to add another car garage.
Well, it's a school district that's, gets concerned about the number of bedrooms because our property taxes, the bulk of them, go towards the school district.
Well, all of our kids, we have, we're done having kids. We have all three of them, and they're all in Los Alamos schools.
But you could sell it, and a future owner
Right.
you know, could want to do something with it. So...
So your kids, are they good at math?
They are, actually. So we'll make them calculate our tax bill.
What kind of math do they practice at your, at their schools?
Well, we have a freshman, one going into Los Alamos, so he'll be going into freshman... I think he's doing geometry. So, you know, we'll have him help out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone has any more questions? Anyone else want to speak? Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing. Any comments?
Do you want to go ahead and make that motion again?
Thank you, Commissioner Aguilar. I would like to move to approve this item.
I will second it.
Please vote. That passes five zero. Congratulations and good luck. It's a pretty design.
And Madam Chair, there is a ten-day appeal period on this item, and the appeal period starts running tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Next item. Conditional use permit, CUP eighteen-ten, at eleven ninety-eight PCH.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Yes, Item C this evening is for conditional use permit eighteen-ten for the operation of a math tutoring business in an existing commercial suite. As you can see, this is the site location. It's at the corner of PCH and Twelfth Street in Zoder Place. There are two buildings on-site with parking throughout the center. We have general commercial across the street. We have some general commercial... Actually, I take that back. That's specialty commercial. General commercial on both the east and the west, and then a park along the south side of the property. The site location for the math tutoring center is within this building right here. It takes up the entire space right here. It's approximately one thousand thirty square feet of suite space. With the two, with the two buildings and the parking, there's approximately a hundred and twenty-six parking spaces. The reason we're here this evening for conditional use permit is because educational-type uses require conditional use permit to assure that the operation is consistent with the existing centers. With the hundred and twenty-six parking spaces, we actually had to go out and have a the applicant perform a parking analysis on the property due to the fact that our current code does not have a classification for tutoring-type centers for parking. The applicant hired a Kane and Associates, who conducted a field survey for the parking demand in a similar-type space in Redondo Beach. It was a little bit larger. It was, I believe, a little bit over thirteen hundred square feet. During the peak times, they did a, a survey on Sundays and Thursdays. And at the peak time at that location, and it was done in May, the peak demand was eleven parking spaces. It was approximately the same number of, of students that, the maximum that this particular site would hold. So with that, we took a look at that, and most of the, most of the other tutoring or math tutoring places in similar beach-type settings were, that we also looked at, were on like Main Street, where they didn't have onsite parking. It was real, it was mainly general parking. So we took a look at this eleven parking spaces, and we noticed that there was a hundred and two parking spaces currently being used with all of the existing uses and using retail as for any of the vacant uses. And we came up with a hundred and two spaces being required. With the eleven, that only puts it up to a hundred and thirteen, which shows that the space has ample parking for all of the uses if they were all being maxed out at the same time. So the floor plan of this particular tutor center is twelve individual tables with two students at each table. So a maximum of twenty-four students. And the applicant has stated that there'll be four staff members on to be able to to roam and, and tutor the students as they're doing their their math problems. They will be required, I believe one of the conditions is, is that they'll be required to stay on-site so that they don't disrupt the the commercial center while they're changing from one set of kids to another. We have received no complaints, and with that, I conclude my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have a couple, actually. The first one being, so we're looking at potentially somewhere between twenty-five and twenty-eight possible individuals in the, in the house, in this facility that would require parking. Is that correct? If their parents and the kids come with one kid each?
Correct.
Okay. My other concern is its proximity to the PCH and Twelfth Street intersection, which has proven recently, and, and in the past as well, to be somewhat of a dangerous corner, especially when people are trying to access the crosswalks. There's a seven-eleven on the opposite corner from Blackboard Bistro. And I'm assuming that the kids would want to utilize the seven-eleven often for snacks and walking across and returning. Are there any plans to somehow maximize the security on that corner, meaning more visible signs, more visible crosswalks, flashing lights on the crosswalk as well? I mean, we had a tragedy, it was just last year, at that very corner. And and that was an adult. And so I'm concerned about kids roaming that area and having something that resembles a school in that facility, in that area that could potentially cause a problem in that intersection. Is there, are there plans, alternatively, I'm not, and I'm not putting this on the math facility, but alternatively, from the city's aspect, for improvements on that intersection?
Commissioner Aguilar, at this time, I do not know that, that I would have to bring that up with my Public Works Department and Engineering Department to know if there was anything being proposed to upgrade that intersection. Now, we do have a condition in here that the kids are to be supervised until they are picked up by a parent, and I believe that the applicant also
Sir, we're, we're, this is, I'll, I'll ask you the same question, so you can, you can, but we're, we'll open it up to discussion in just a minute. Okay, I, I, you understand my concern as well. I mean, that used to be a school site. That whole corner was an elementary school back in the day, and and I, and I, and I don't know exactly what was going on, but it was in the newspaper the other day. At least, they posted something that there was some sort of surveillance or Caltrans workers occupying that area with cameras and situations, and I just was wondering if there was any way you could divulge what was going on there.
From my understanding, they were doing some investigation work regarding that accident.
Okay.
I'm looking for it.
It's between third grade and ninth grade. Fourteen, fifteen, yeah.
I hope so. I, like I said, I wasn't putting the burden on the facility as much as I was on the city to at least help assure residents and parents that there wouldn't be any issue.
Your mic is muted.
Oh, you put your
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
Commissioner Aguilar.
Can you hear me now?
Commissioner Aguilar, and I believe that the Michael will, will explain this, but as part of their and a lot of our tutoring centers do have these types of regulations, especially for children this age, because they are conducted within commercial centers, they require the, the parents to pick them up so that we can i- i- it helps to lessen the liability of the tutoring center and everybody involved if these kids are picked up, so that the applicant will hold the kids there until their parents come and pick them up, so they will be supervised.
Okay, because, yeah, I mean, when I used to go, get dropped off at things, my parents would say, "Go down to the corner store and meet me there," because it's easier for them to pull in and out, and I, you know, those are, those are things. I'll, I'll ask you about them as well.
Yeah, if they're being picked up, being held for parental pickup, they're not going to be running over to seven-eleven unless parents say so. Anyone else have questions of staff?
I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Okay, then with that, we'll open the public hearing.
Hi, my name is Michael Tomer. Love to hear any questions you, you have about the application.
So, so then I guess I would, just to piggyback on what I was discussing, so how strict would your, your rules regarding staying in the facility until parents pick you up be? Because I get what I, my example was that my parents, after the age of nine or ten, were like, they kind of said, "Well, you're fine, go to the corner and meet us there," or I was a latchkey kid, which is totally off, you know?
Well, I could tell you that student safety is, is of the utmost importance of mathnasium. And, and per some of the comments earlier, it, it's really designed to be a drop-off program for, for kids, and obviously, the constituency of this tutoring center are kids, so no one's going to be driving themselves, it would be a parent. And parents are encouraged to drop off, go run errands, go to the pavilions across the street, Main Street shops, what have you. Come back and pick the kids up, and part of the contract we have with the parents is that they sign to say, "We will drop off and physically pick up our child." And part of my responsibility as the, the owner is to make sure that the child's not leaving the center without a parent there to, to meet them or, or to take them home to the next activity, to seven-eleven even.
So you acknowledge a liability there until the parents pick up?
Pardon me?
You acknowledge the liability of the facility until the parents?
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's, that's why there's such a, a protocol around that type of safety with the, with the students.
Okay. I do have other questions.
Sure.
If I could. So I tried to do a little research on the training for franchisees for mathnasium and the type of math that they are trained on to therefore then tutor. The Los Alamos School District has approximately six elementary schools, two junior, middle schools, I'm sorry, and a high school. And they strictly abide by the CCSS, the California Common Core State Standards. And I've learned that, and I'm not saying mathnasium this way because I haven't been able to find information, so I'm asking.
Okay.
But for example, other companies like Kumar, which has a facility located just down the street from us on Los Alamos Boulevard, I specifically went in there to inquire, and this was separate from this issue, but for my daughter, who want, who needed some help with math, and they specifically said that they don't have any tutors that tutor in Common Core and the procedures to come up with those solutions as well. Would your facility offer a curriculum that would be beneficial to the students of Los Alamos?
The, I can tell you, the mathnasium method is, is compliant to the Common Core teaching that exists today.
Okay.
So it, the, the method supports Common Core, and tutors are... I guess your question was kind of two parts, the training, and then does it meet the, the Common Core thresholds?
Yes, and then also, if you could clarify, it's compatible Yes, and then also, if you could clarify, it's compatible. I mean, there's, I mean, most math is compatible if you you know, move things around, but specifically, they're going to want to learn, these kids are going to need to know the steps and procedures. So, compatibility and relevance.
I would tell you, the, the teaching method teaches math in a, in a way that, that kids can understand it versus just do the repetitions, which is different from some of the, some of the other tutoring facilities that exist today. In fact, one of the ones you mentioned is, is all about repetition, repetition. Mathnasium is different in that it, it, it seeks to, to promote an understanding of what students are doing, not only doing the mechanics of the, the math problems, but also having a mental understanding of why, and what's, what's the numerator, what's the denominator, and why are those things important versus you just divide one by the other.
And you do the sticks and squares and all that fun stuff?
Right.
Okay. All right. I'm, I'm good. I'm done. You can ask your questions.
Anyone else have questions? Nope. Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Anyone else want to address this issue?
If you want to make your statements earlier official, you'd have to do it now instead of during this hearing, if you'd like to. It's your, your option.
He spoke in open communications.
In open communication, it's not, it's not considered testimony for this here, for this specific issue.
Oh, was he on this issue?
I'm not sure, but I figured public comments on the record from the day you give it, whether it's on the topic or prior to the meeting, but, I mean, in the meeting, but prior to the item.
Public comments intended for issues that aren't on the agenda to be
This is on the agenda.
Correct, so if you want, if you'd like
This is the time to speak on it, then.
If you'd like to just say what you said earlier, you can.
Basically, I'm recommending that they approve it. That parking facility there has more parking than just about any place else in town, and it seems quite appropriate. As far as the vision, you're, the traffic and the 12th and PCH is concerned, in front of Blackboard Bistro, there's a very large tree that's on the owner's property. But should he be willing to pull that down, that would probably give that corner a great deal more visibility, which would solve one of your concerns. So, thank you very much.
Then my concern would be no shade during the barbecue.
It's so big that if we get a big rain,
Right.
it'll be like the one that came down in 83 that was on, down by the park.
Yeah.
It's almost the same size. I think it was planted actually earlier, going back in years of treaching around the town in storms.
Bruce, we don't take down trees in this city.
We let them down.
The wind took them down, and it would be a lot better to take it down than have it fall on someone crossing either of the streets. And, but whether the owner would or not, don't know, but it's just a thought if you're concerned about it.
Thank you, Bruce. Okay, we close the public hearing. Comments?
I like having new businesses in town, especially businesses that benefit the people in this community. I just want to make sure that, you know, we have a long relationship, so. I am good. I would, I would motion to approve the conditional use permit for mathnasium.
I'll second it.
Please vote. That passes 5-0.
Is there a 10-day on that or no?
Yes.
There is a 10-day appeal period on this decision. The appeal period starts running tomorrow.
Thank you. Director's report. Steve.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this evening, I even have props for our director's report. This is a first. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm trying to step up our game here. So, just
With all the additional staff you have.
We'll get to that even. We'll even get to that. So, this evening, part of our, my presentation is to talk about that we have a workshop coming up this Wednesday between 6:00 and 8:00 o'clock at the Marina Center for our sea-level-wise vulnerability adaptation strategies. So, that goes along with the local coastal program that we are currently undertaking to try to get approved and through the Coastal Commission. This is one of the first workshops since the vulnerability study has been completed. That vulnerability study is currently on our website, so people can take a look at it before the meeting. We will have a presentation at this workshop and then specific stations for individuals to, to look at and understand what we're looking at.
Interesting. How far inland do they consider us to be vulnerable for an ocean-related event?
Well, for sea-level rise itself, Old Town has a big chunk, depending at what sea-level rise you're looking at. There are four actual levels that the Coastal Commission has us looking at. The highest being, I believe it's 6 foot 5 inches of sea-level rise, and that takes us all the way to PCH.
Really? Wow.
That's correct. So, yes, I encourage everybody to come out and take a look at it and so that they can understand what we're looking at and some types of adaptation measures. I was just watching a workshop this week, last, well, not this week, last week on Friday, put on by the Coastal Commission, that did talk about sea-level rise and the LCPs, and how this is something that's been new, that's over the last year, sea-level rise has been addressed to us, and become definitely a bigger concern, and with all of the new LCPs or the revised LCPs, Coastal Commission is requiring all the cities who have them to update them.
Okay, interesting.
So, please come out and let everybody know. As you can see, we have a, a young gentleman sitting here at our planning desk. He is our new assistant planner. This is Marco Cuevas Jr. He comes from the city of Paramount. He, he comes well-recommended. I've actually worked with him at another jurisdiction, so he's a good addition to our staff.
Are you commuting from Paramount? Are you commuting from Paramount?
No, I'm commuting from the city of Long Beach.
Okay.
So, I'm nearby.
Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other comments, Steve?
We expect to see that resume in our packet next week. I'm just kidding. Welcome, Marco.
I have a comment.
Thank you.
I have no more comments.
No further comments? Okay. Commission concerns?
I don't have a concern. I did want to point out that this coming weekend at the pier is the annual Fish Fry. The Seal Beach Lions Club, which is a very large club in our community and a very large community, contributor to local charities, has the annual Fish Fry. It takes place on both sides of the, I'm sorry, on the south side of the pier. Is it south? It's not really south. It's like west or whatever. It's at the pier, so just head towards the pier and you can't miss it. They have bands. The whole, the event itself is free. You just got to pay for, for the fish and chips, and so they appreciate your support if you can get down there.
Any other commission concerns? None? Okay, with that, we are adjourned.